So, I mean before I open up this hearing, are we doing anything with this? Or we just continue?
So we're not actually opening the hearing. There's an email in your packet that I received today from the engineer asking for our continuance. So the board just needs to continue it.
Can we do that without reading? Do I have to read this?
You don't need to read it, no, we're not gonna open it up. But I mean you could state what the project is and the fact that we're gonna continue it, but um...
Okay, do they, do they wanna, or do they wanna continue it still?
You didn't give a date and specify. Our twenty-fifth agenda is filling up pretty quick. So I would prefer to have this moved or continued to the October ninth meeting day.
That's fine.
Seven thirty.
Okay, will we continue the hearing for coming century mill to October ninth at seven thirty?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Can we just do a meeting minutes?
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay.
I apologize, I didn't, I just finished one today.
That's fine, so we got August fourteenth. Let's see, is that it? Start at fourteen?
That's it, yeah.
Okay. It's good time. On, on the one forty-seven here, did you say that I reached my cell?
Oh shoot, I forgot to do that, I remember that, yep.
We're just moving minutes.
Okay.
We continue twenty-first century mill to October nine.
Okay. Not when I do other work, I guess.
Okay. Is there? Can I motion? Still reading it.
It's just this one seventy.
This one seventy, yeah.
I will move the room. Accept the minutes for the August fourteenth. Leading with the one change that I noted.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So next up we got these, uh... Is that our schedule? Yeah. Um, yes. So we got twenty-third, October ninth, twenty-third, and fifteenth, November five. Yeah? Twenty, that second November would be what?
The thirteenth.
Would be right on Thanksgiving.
No, Thanksgiving is like the twentieth.
No, I'm saying the second November.
I believe it's Thanksgiving, I think, I think it's twenty-four.
Oh yeah, it'd be twenty-seventh. Usually we do one in November, one in December.
Yeah. Don't wanna have one on Christmas Day? Wednesday.
I'll be here on the same.
Wednesday is, Wednesday is all good, only two meetings, one in November, one in December. Anybody with that?
We need a motion there.
Chair.
Chair, we approve the meeting schedule for September eleventh, twenty-fifth, October ninth, twenty-third, November thirteenth, and December eleventh.
Sounds so good.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Keys Farm Subdivision, we're pleased to plan board to discuss construction progress and recent noise violations.
Board to examine the hours of operation and enforcement options. Bob?
Hi.
What's going on? How's it going over there?
It's going pretty well.
Yeah?
We, as everybody knows, we gotta, we get slow scars. Okay, we, we got our, our pavement down sometime right up for April fifteenth. And we had a backlog of buyers, which was a good thing. We've been building, we've been, you know, hampered by weather conditions as usual, but guess what? We're probably in use with now, it's raining every day, getting the springs on. I think we can say we've worked through most of that issue. We're, we're hopeful to get the curbing, sidewalks, guardrails, everything, but tough loading this year. And so we have functioning drainage, okay, for the winter. You know, that's, that's, that's kind of lofty goal, but I think it's achievable. And that's, that's basically where we are. We've constructed the trail, okay, okay for, again, the concon. We did the nice sign, not the cheap sign. I'm, I'm just trying to think of anything else I did right rather than wrong.
Have you constructed the basins and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, so those have been?
Yeah. And, and just the ones, you know, okay, need to be mucked out and stuff.
Sure, but they, they've actually given it.
Yeah, tall grass there, we've actually mowed it a few times.
So was basin one that was overflowing down to the stream?
Yeah.
What, what's going on with the remediation of that stream that's all set and everything?
And we actually just got the, uh, there's the pond on the other side, or marsh, I don't know what to call it. Uh, we didn't have permission to go on until last week.
Oh, okay.
Okay, after emails, certified letters, regular letters, it's not because we didn't, okay, attempt to do that, it's just no mean.
Right.
Okay, that they, so they finally sent, sent back. We're hopeful we get it all done next week, we get a couple of nice, nice days. There's only a couple, three hours left here, okay? And most of the, most of the stuff is clean.
You said to scoop up the silt or whatever?
Yeah, it's all handwork at this point.
Oh, okay.
You know, I mean, it's, okay, there's no machine work, well, there never was any machine work. But that's, that's where we are. I mean, I, I, I think it's fair to say short of, you know, another, you know, how to be a storm or something like that, it can be, I was, under control, okay? Or at least, okay, something that we can, you know, when we have a breakout, okay, okay, Rhino Construction's here, they have been on that, okay? We substituted some wood chips for the concon rather than harassing, okay, some of the outer slopes, okay, the steeper slopes around the ponds, not going in, going on the outside of that, which really is held up well. That was with that recovery with, with the concon.
When you say pond, you're just talking about a basin?
Yeah, basins, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially they've stabilized the site at this point.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have a question, it took a while.
Yeah.
So we're set for this year's hundred year storm?
Pardon me?
We're all set for this year's hundred year storm?
Yeah. I don't know.
Those changes.
So what's going on with the portable, portable on the front?
Well, we've, we just loaded up a drywall today. Okay, so that's moved, that's moving along, we put the roof on it, we painted it, doors in it, we've done all the rots. We've, you know, we've got the plums down, the electricals down.
So we ended up what? Dividing first floor, second floor? That's what it's divided?
Yes, yes.
You didn't do, you were, we were talking, talking about maybe an extension or something back?
No, it, no, it's, it's, um, you know, I don't think a lot of credit goes to a lot of people, but you know, like Mike Savinow has, has been out there several times, click, okay, as a, more an advisor rather than, okay, quote, okay, doing inspections, you know, okay, we didn't want to, um, just do something, say, no, I don't want that, okay? And, and so, um, you know, we've been asking questions and getting appropriate answers. So that's moved ahead. Matter of fact, okay, water was helped today yesterday. You know, we've been in communication, we've been a whole time.
Yeah, I've been going over about every three months to check it out. And it's been making progress, obviously a little bit slower in the summer than, than it might have liked, but it's, it's making progress. I was there when, when the drywall was loaded in, and you can see that the insulation contractor was able to do the work. I was actually pretty impressed with the insulation contractor.
Yeah, it's all foam.
Because, because A, they, they, they use foam and a bunch of clever materials, but also the gallohs going, going through the thing with a fine tooth comb, doing air sealing and all that, you know, doing it right as opposed to just slapping it on.
That's great.
That was, that was, I thought that was quite good.
Yeah, the only thing is, that's, that's the real challenge that's left there, okay, is, is the floors. I mean, they're out of level, they're out of limits, it's a three-hundred-year-old house.
Yeah. So now are those, are they gonna be rentals or is people will buy the individual kind of like condo style?
Right, and, um...
Will, will, will they have to have like some type of a fee or something since?
HOA.
An HOA for those two or?
I don't know that, okay, we're working with Marina O'Hara. And, okay, she's at, at Hack, and, and we're, we're, we're working with her. Matter of fact, okay, what we've done, 'cause it is such an old house, um, yeah, I guess the answer is yes, okay? Okay, because there'll be some common, okay, pavements and everything.
Yeah.
We, we volunteered to stop that off because it's such an old house with a five-thousand-dollar, okay, stipend in there as well. So I don't know if you knew that or not.
I did not know that, no.
Not that makes a difference to you with the affordable housing, I think it should make a difference to. You, you, I didn't even tell you that, like, you know, okay, Marina O'Hara.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in on that as well, 'cause I've talked to Marina, she's from MCO associates. So she handles all like the lottery, lotteries for the affordable units, this is what her company does. And she also puts together a marketing plan for the affordable units. And it's, one of the conditions of permit requires that they submit a marketing plan, I think, on the ninth building permit. So they're right around there, they may have exceeded that, I've talked to Bob about it, but I've also talked to, talked to Marina. She knows and she understands, and she's gonna be getting that plan soon, so.
Yeah, she, yeah, the, the, the problem's not on our side, it's on her side.
So, so we're along the path for counting towards our end of the year?
Yes.
Our intention, just so you know, is to have that CO November first, okay? We've ordered the kitchens, um, you know, and apparently they're doing, well, they're doing a...
Yeah, we're gonna, we're actually, this is a good opportunity. We're planning on the twenty-ninth of September to dedicate a plaque. We've actually had a bronze plaque made for the building. And we're looking for a time to do it. Normally we do it at the end of the project, we probably won't be at the end, but the Bonn's only family specifically asked if they, we could do something earlier so that their elderly relatives could attend. And given their relationship to the house, their history with the town, I couldn't say anything but yes. So we're planning an event at one o'clock on, on Sunday, the twenty-ninth. So you're all invited to come, since you guys had a significant role in this as well. And it won't be very long, it'll be fairly short, but hopefully a good, it's an opportunity.
Tour the house or just outside or?
Oh, I think we're gonna do it, not only do it outside, I hope, if the weather is good, if the weather isn't good, then we'll maybe have to move indoors.
Okay, yeah, sounds cool. One P M you said?
What time is that?
It's one o'clock on Sunday, the twenty-ninth of September.
Yeah, I think, I think that whole situation worked out pretty well.
Absolutely, yep.
Yeah, thanks to Bob. I do, folks.
I mean, there are a lot of people in here that have done, you know, and Bob has done a great job, I think. So it's really worked well.
Yeah, all right. I think that's all the good stuff.
Yeah, let's get the best.
Martha Remington, I just had a good comment. I noticed that they put up a blind driveway sign for that northernmost steep driveway that's coming down.
Yeah, that's where that, okay, you know.
Yeah, I mean, it's really handy because that's tricky, and I thought, oh, there's a sign, so.
And I think everybody that's written down there has seen, they cleared all the trees, they have, there were the lines, which has given a lot more visibility. And now I think you can see the blind driveway sign. Okay, I think you put them for.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so that's all the nice things.
Yeah, so, do we have a list of all these noise complaints?
Yes, there's another one.
Oh, it's on that one. Got it.
Okay, can I have a copy in the mail?
Yeah, I can share.
Shuffle, shuffle, shuffle.
Oh, it's just something for what you said.
Yeah. So these, these latest few, is that a builder? August twentieth, or August fifteenth through the twenty-sixth? What was going on with those? I just noticed they group together, so.
Okay, um, what day was August twenty-sixth?
Twenty-two, Monday. Sunday, twenty-sixth is a Monday.
Yeah.
So it's a Sunday and a Monday? So it says they came and stayed.
Okay, so, you may or may not know, all these people except for Bob and Martha, okay, the residents there, they actually lived there. Apparently, well, let me address the twenty-sixth first and I'll work backwards. I believe, okay, this was, okay, it was about five-thirty in the afternoon, and the framer was still framing. They were putting the wall up and didn't wanna stop doing that. And, you know, they, they were, they were told to stop, they shored it up, and they stopped. Okay, so that was Monday, I believe. On the twenty-fifth, as I understand it, 'cause I obviously wasn't there, okay, somebody was doing some yard work, either cutting down a tree or something, okay, an arm worker, and...
How many people are living there? How many houses?
One, two, three, four, five, five.
Oh, you already have five occupancies?
Right. So the, um...
Wait, can I have five occupancies, yeah, five?
Yeah.
Two.
I have two. I ran, I ran the, I ran a report at our permitting, permitting center somewhere.
It was not like by four.
Oh, yeah, okay, I'll have to look into it.
Which other?
No, I can tell you, okay.
About eighteen, not six?
No, no, like, like fifteen, sixteen, eight, and six.
Fifteen, sixteen.
Eight and six.
Eight and six?
Yeah.
Eighth and one all the way back here?
Yeah.
I mean, there's, it doesn't show, it's a building per.
There's three of us here.
Okay.
Maybe just choose some shit for us.
Maybe that's the, like, what, eight, like fifteen, not sixteen?
Where's something accounted for?
Six, please don't kick me out.
Not at all.
Unlikely.
Maybe we'll...
Just, just pay your tax bill, we won't.
As long as the occupancy permit's been issued, then you're all set. Otherwise, you're gonna move in with Bob.
So, Eric, how did you look up the? We have a, a permit tracking software. We recently transitioned from one to another, so there may be a discrepancy here, I'll have to take a look again. Um, 'cause I have to set the parameters for the reports, so I may have not done it wide enough to capture everything, so I'll have to go back and look.
Well, you show eighteen being occupied.
Um, that's not.
No.
Wait, it's colored red.
I have ninety-one, much like ninety-one.
Okay, let's see.
It should be like six.
Oh.
Yeah, ninety-one's on six.
Yeah.
Six is the only one you had tried it in, but you didn't have...
Six and eighteen are the only two that I thought had occupancy at this point.
Needless to say, this four.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Okay.
So where are we now with dates?
So August twenty-fifth.
Sunday.
Which is Sunday.
It's just yard work.
I, I have no idea, okay, so, so somebody went up there, okay, somebody, I, I heard two, two different things. Somebody was cutting a tree, and somebody was mowing the grass, I don't know which is which, but, you know.
Like one of these residents mowing?
Maybe one of them wants to fess up, I don't know.
They should, they should be allowed to mow.
It doesn't matter, no limit to activity or station issues, so.
Yeah.
Well, let's move on to the twentieth.
Okay, the twentieth, okay, the twentieth, okay, and I...
Tuesday.
That's a what?
Tuesday.
And I don't even know what that is, okay, if that's a Tuesday. Okay, it, it was...
Well, somebody got a ticket, so somebody got what it was.
Well, you know, and, and that's one of the reasons I wanna talk about it, okay? You know, there were three tickets issued in August, and I can tell you, I don't know which one is which, okay? But I can follow in the sword for one of them, okay? And I came in on a Monday morning, we had to put an egress window in and cut some concrete. The only, the only guy I could get would come out on Saturday, okay? He cut the concrete, and that's, that's, you know, I, I, I made that determination, was up on lot nine, which you can't get any further away from anybody, okay?
Doesn't matter, you're under, you're under a microscope up there, you know that, right? All right.
I'm telling, well, I'm telling you.
Right.
Okay, no, 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 and, and, look, I'm following in the sword, okay?
Yeah.
And one of these tickets was for a lumber truck, okay, that came in on a Saturday, okay? And, and he, you know, we call them lumber returns, okay?
Right.
Wednesday, Tuesday, Monday, doesn't matter when it is, okay? Whenever they drive by with an empty truck, they go in and they, and they pick it up. Apparently, and, and we don't know when they're coming, I don't know if they're coming Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, okay? I, okay, I just don't know when they're coming, okay? But they have a mofet, okay, which is on the back of the trailer.
Piggy, yep.
Yep, right, and that, beep, 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 that, that's, that's Morse code for call the police, call the police, call the police. So, 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 so...
So the twentieth, what happened on the twentieth?
That's...
She doesn't know.
All I can tell you is the three tickets, I know of one, excuse me, I know of two. One was the framer, okay, that was working, okay? So I know that had to be a weekday, so I assume that was the twenty-sixth, whatever it was, the Monday.
Right.
Okay? One was me. Okay, absolutely me. And one, I believe, was the sea truck, okay?
All right, so, yeah, so that, that makes sense, 'cause it's three tickets.
Right, okay, now, now, there was another phone call into the police.
The fifteenth is interesting because now crew members were blaming other crew members for the noise, what, what was?
Don't even know what it, don't even know what they're talking about, but, but, okay, I mean, there are guys, and we've talked about this, okay, in the past, there are guys that leave their tools there, okay? Then they go down and get their tools, okay? There were guys that, you know, okay, I think it was, you needed to move a machine one day, okay? Okay, on a Saturday, you know, moves it down the end of the road, makes the least bit of noise he can, and, you know, that's, that's...
It's because of the special permit for us to move it.
Right, okay, it's a hundred thousand pound machine, you can only do it at night, it's, it's, it's a big deal. You know, but, but, but this isn't gonna lessen, okay, the, the impact here, the more people that are, that are living here, the more, the more noise is going to be there. And, you know, I mean, Sam, okay, had the unfortunate, uh, incident that, that the truck let go its brakes, okay, and went through the garage, I'm sure everybody here heard of that. Okay, maybe not, I don't know. You know, and, and, there's a, there's a Euclid sticking in his garage, okay? So he's gonna be doing, um, you know, a major repair, sixty thousand dollar repair on his house till it's five days old. Okay, you know, okay, I mean, you know, I don't know, is he going to be under the same scrutiny that I am? Okay, that's, that's, okay, that's construction, okay? You know, and I'm not trying to just fan the fire, okay? But I'm, but I'm just telling you, okay, that, you know, okay, I mean, I...
More people want noise.
Look, as a resident there, this just sounds all ridiculous, 'cause as a resident there, there's no noise. There's no noise. There's four people living on that street, there's absolutely no noise at night, it's quiet on the weekends. My wife is there as a stay-at-home mom with my three-year-old and my nine-month-old. They're not waking up from their naps, 'cause it's loud outside. It's totally fine, and it's ridiculous that someone...
This is, this is standard, standard restrictions that are on every sub, every developer. And every other developer, you know, the, the number of noise complaints that we get in most other developments is almost nil.
I, I understand, but it's just, we're in the middle of nowhere, it's just...
Well, you're not, you're not in the middle of nowhere as you think you are. There's Danforth, the Danforth development right next to you, and there's been issues, noise issues with, you know, you know, in some of the clearing and stuff, they were, you know, they were complaints about the noise, even though, you know...
Can I just, so which lot were you?
I'm lot fifteen, with the broken garage. But Bob made a good point, though, I, I mean, I'm gonna have Bob fix my house, right? You know, and, and that's not part of this whole development, I'm gonna hire him to do the work, 'cause he built the house.
That's a little different, that's an agreement between you and Bob.
Yeah, correct, so.
And it goes under, I mean, it's your single-family homeowner at that point, so it doesn't fall under the rules and regulations for the subdivision.
Okay, vacancies can be working.
But...
If, if, if...
The police, they call us.
Issues who may want to live under the same...
But at the same time, I mean, I've been, I, you know, this happened a week after I moved in. I've, I've been living with a broken living room and no garage, you know, after spending a, a huge amount of money for us. I mean, I'm gonna need Bob to come in on the weekends and fix it up as soon as I can, as soon as I get everything clear with the insurance, so.
Okay.
You know.
I think, I think in that case...
You can wanna look at this. Okay, that's just, you can feel in that way, kinda like if they're, sorry.
Ooh.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's...
Okay.
And, and he can do that, right? As a, as a homeowner, he could have workers in there on the weekend.
You can hire whoever you want, so.
Oh, it doesn't have to be me, it's just...
No, 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 no.
No, that's, that's my whole point, is as a single-family homeowner, you can hire whoever you want to do what you want. I mean, you wanna be respectful with your neighbors, obviously, but they're not under the same...
I mean, does Fulton have bylaws about noise in general?
No, not for some of them.
Right, I mean, I certainly have construction workers out till eight or nine o'clock at my house.
They're not, there's...
Well, there's gonna be an estimate running down.
Yes, so, but we just need to be aware, there's, there aren't stipulations really for a hundred, a single-family homeowner, but there are stipulations for the subdivision.
And it's something that I would need to contact the police about as well, because when they go out there, they're not gonna know the difference. It's gonna be very hard for them to decipher that, so. If, if work is gonna be going on in a particular home, it would be helpful if I knew that, so that way I can let the police know that it's being connected.
Okay, but it just so happens that I know these two guys, okay?
I know that you may not always be aware, right?
But I might know that somebody's gonna build a deck that weekend, I, I, I don't know.
Well, I think you just, just let, just let the residents know during construction, if they're gonna be doing work outside of the hours of operation, that at least it should be reported so the police aren't coming. Or when they come, they know that it's a lot of operation.
So, you know, I mean, I, 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 I understand that, so even after, you know, a conversation with, okay, with the policeman and so on and so forth, I said, listen, if we have a sign which I replaced again today, okay, that, it's not much better, but it's better, okay?
I drive past it all the time, but ultimately, Bob, ultimately, you're, you're the developer of that whole area. You're the man in charge, you're the boss, ultimately, okay? And you have to, you have to be aware of everything that's going on every day.
I, I, I posted a sign, please, let me just finish, okay? And I'm not trying to argue, and I'm, and I'm not trying to cut you off. When I leave there, okay, I can't, I, okay, I can't put a chain across the road, okay? I've asked the police, I don't care if you arrest these subcontractors, take them out in handcuffs, I don't care, okay? Don't give me a damn ticket, okay? Because I have, I, I, I've told them... take them out in handcuffs, I don't care, okay, don't give me a damn ticket, okay, because I have, I, I, I've told them not to, I posted it, you know, trespassing, you know, arrest them, okay?
And do you have it in a contract with them, or something?
I don't even have a contract with, well, I guess I do, he's the only guy I do in a con- contract, I don't care else I would have tied him up.
I mean, crew members blaming other crew members, that's, 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 I'm sorry.
No, but, 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 but why am I expecting?
I, I, I can't, I can't wrap my head around that. What is, what is the, uh, the ticket, thirty-three hundred?
Yeah, the three hundred dollars, okay?
With the noise violations ticket.
You know, because, okay, because I would rather, you know, okay, the Brazilian, okay, okay, cider that, that I'm trying to communicate to, okay, he come in here, okay, and, and, you know, I mean, I, I, I literally, okay, you know, say, five o'clock, do you understand? You know, and the guy's got this much left, and he says, five o'clock, but it's, it's, it's five o'clock, okay, and, and, okay, all I'm suggesting is, okay, that I've asked, okay, that if somebody is on my property, okay, after five o'clock, arrest them, I, you know, I pay taxes here too.
Can I ask a question? When they issue the, um, when the police issue the ticket, do they issue, do they note who was on site, like, do they give a name, like so-and-so was on site for violation? Or how is the ticket issued, or is it just?
I, I would have to confirm with the, with the police department, um, what I gather so far is if work is being conducted on site, you essentially approach the person and say, you know, you're, this is in violation of whatever.
So they don't get the name of that person?
I don't know, I just, I just know that the follow-up is that the ticket goes to Bob, because he is the.
No, and I, I get that, so, so my whole point was if they, um, if there's by any chance, I don't know when you get the ticket, if it says who, I mean, I'm, I'm, sorry that it doesn't, because you're saying you don't know who did it, but, cause that, that could be a way for you to put that back onto them, um.
No, I mean, I knew who the framer that got it, okay, okay, cause I knew that, okay, but, you know, I mean, there was one ticket there, I, you know, I, I don't, and Eric, and every time the police are called, okay, whether it's real or, 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 uh, okay, or a homeowner or something like that, okay, you know, I, I, okay, I mean, I'm, I'm not noticed, but it ends up here, okay, you know, and it makes this list look, oh, look at Bob, okay, he's just, you know, throwing all caution to the wind.
Well, I think the reason why it appears, cause there's multiple to, it's not like there's just one.
There were three, you know, I don't know.
But, but I do agree in getting his stuff fixed, and if it's something that he needs to, or that you need to do to get his garage and, you know, your, your family room fixed, just a simple communication to Erica, just going, listen.
Yeah, I have no issue with that, okay, and, and, and this is what I'm saying, because we are so busy, okay, I would do that on a weekend, and it would be expedited, because, okay, then I'm not taking guys off, 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 off the work, as far as the swimming pool goes, you know, I, I mean, that is right next to, um.
Danforth, right.
Danforth, okay?
But again, that's a single-family homeowner, that's not.
You know, there's going to be, you know, there's, you know, there's irrigation companies, there's, you know, trucks coming in with moving stuff, I mean.
Eric, have you notified the Butters and Danforth that there are residents living there now?
Yeah, I did, related that to him in email.
It might be extra.
That they shouldn't necessarily call the police every time they hear something?
Yeah.
I'd also like permission of work, okay, on this house, o- okay, so I can get this done, okay, it's, it's, it's one of those things that, I'm, 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 okay, I'm here, I'd rather, I'd rather hash it out.
All right, so.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to echo that, too, if there's any way that Bob can get permission to do weekend work at the, at the anti-counts between.
No, no, we're not going there.
I, I, I think at this point, it's, it's not feasible, um, we, we have the parameters of work, the times that you need to work within, we need to stick with them, we're getting by, you know, notices and tickets are being worked on outside of that, we certainly can't go and allow, at this point, I, I think that's how.
Not entirely, like interior work at that building, which is fairly remote relative to the rest of it, or just too sensitive at this point?
I think it's too sensitive.
Too sensitive, I agree, okay.
So, so may I ask a question?
Yes.
Okay, and again, again, I'm not just trying to throw enough crap at the wall and whatever sticks, sticks, okay, but, so if somebody buys a lot, okay, and they're building their house, okay, they, they're the homeowner, what happens in that case? They can work whenever they want?
I think, uh, it probably needs to go with some type of, it's part of the covenant, right, that.
What was the question? If someone buys a lot, a si- like a single lot, and they're building their house on it, they can.
Yeah, that falls with, I'm, under the subdivision principle, or that, or that.
So it's the same.
Doesn't matter to builder, yeah.
Doesn't matter to builder.
So it, so he, he, even if the guy's building the house himself? Okay?
Just clarifying, does that, Bob gets three hundred dollar ticket and he's paying all the tickets, still?
Yeah.
I mean, but it, my, my question from Andy back here was, you know, you're probably out there cutting up some wood for a nice bonfire or something, chainsaw or whatever, and the cops come, does that mean me still, again, the police guy comes down there and says, hey, noise complaints on us?
Well, no, I think if that, you're a homeowner, you're a homeowner, you're not a worker on the site, working on the subdivision.
You're, you're a homeowner, you're a gentleman to get for that.
So you as a homeowner are allowed, you know, to do.
I think, I think, I would, I would, I mean, I would think in particular was issued because a private homeowner was doing something that, you know, maybe the board would waive it or something, but it doesn't sound like, you know, so one of this was framings, that's on you, the other one was, uh.
A lumber truck.
I think it was a lumber truck.
I mean, so.
Okay.
The one, the early one in August, I forget which.
The concrete.
Concrete, and what's this May twentieth one?
I have no idea, that was years ago, okay, I think, wasn't that on, uh, I, 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 I don't remember that.
I know it's two other times where work was shut down, but.
There were one that, trees, the tree work.
Yeah, that, that was a year ago.
Yeah, it was like work shut down, but it doesn't say a ticket was issued, so, I don't know, so.
You know, I'm not asking for it to be waived, I'm just, I'm, okay, I'm, 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 I'm just suggesting that, you know, okay, I'm here, okay, I heard you saying, you see it's more complex than, 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 than you think.
Great, uh, I think, I think it was, say, a private home, like if, when he's working, getting the dump truck out of his house, or whatever he's doing.
So is it fair to say?
If he's working on the weekend, then that's what they come for, and I, I think it should be waived, but I don't think what, what's here should be waived, but I think we'd understand if it was a private owner doing something.
Yeah, but I don't wanna, this is the whole point, I don't wanna be ticketed and have to come here to explain that this has nothing to do with me.
Well, I think the thing to do is what I said, though, I mean, it might, it's an extra step, but maybe you report to Erica.
I, I don't know when he's working on his house, okay, so, so, it, it, it just.
I mean, we're not talking about hundreds of people here, we're talking about four houses, you know.
I understand, but then there's gonna be fourteen.
Just say, as, you know, this development is under construction, you know, during, while we're under construction, if you're gonna do this work outside of our working hours, please just report, I don't think it's that hard to do.
My suggestion, if we have occupied houses that have addresses, could the police be informed of the fact that these houses are?
No, they all have addresses.
But, but, but don't it, don't it have street number addresses?
Yeah.
So, so the police, if they come to, you know, X, Y, Z moderator lightweight, doesn't count?
Yeah.
Just ignore them all.
That's what I'm saying.
So, but it's very simple and clean, they don't.
That's what I'm saying, they have to just, if, if they're gonna be doing work on Saturday or Sunday, they just, they need, they need to know the police.
Well, as I said, i- i- it's almost independent of the act, exact work, if the house today is occupied, and notice would go out in a fifteen minutes saying, this house is occupied, noise complaint ticket do not apply to this address, end of story.
Yeah, I agree.
And you don't have to do it on an updating basis and all that.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get at, yeah. Joe.
The, the only thing I'm trying to get, and I'm not trying to belabor this, okay, I, I get things to do too, the, the, uh, it, it's, it, I, I don't think it's fair, okay, that anybody that comes down there, you know, the first ticket that I got, they asked me for my license and they wrote me a ticket, okay, there is no reason in the world I can't ask, okay, the subcontractor for the identification, okay, and, you know, and take that and write him a ticket, there's just no reason, okay, you know, okay, it's no different than.
Well, you were just saying that you don't have some type of agreement, so if they don't know about that, I mean, you're the one who knows about it, it should be, I agree with.
It's posted.
James, that.
It's posted, okay, you know, okay, the, okay.
You're hiring these guys, you know, if you don't want them working at a certain time, I think.
But I'm telling you that, true, okay, okay, so, I mean, I'm, I'm.
Well, then, uh, you, you, you're the G C of the area, you know what I mean?
I, I, I am, I'm not there twenty-four seven.
Well, it's, it's like safety stuff, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring up OSHA as the same thing, you know, obviously, the, the G C is, is ultimately responsible for everything that happens on, on a job, and you have to be clear with these people that, or subcontractors, that, listen, this can happen.
I'm viewing this as like somebody's breaking in my house, okay?
But you can't, if you're employing them, if you, if you've hired them and have a contract with them, you can't do that. I mean, write something up, if you work outside of these times and you get a ticket, it's on you. It's on you, yeah, exactly.
Like a sign?
Huh? No, no.
Like a sign.
Contract with the client.
Contractor.
Okay, it, it's on me, I have to come in here and take the heat for this, okay, why can't they just write the ticket to the subcontractor?
I think, I think that would be a question for the chief, uh, chief, the police.
They're gonna have to send me back here.
No, we're not the ones who issue the ticket. But what, what kind of jurisdiction does the police chief have over, you know, Joe Schmo contractor from outside of, you know, this, I mean, if, can?
The violation is of a permit, and the permit is to you, Bob, it's not to that subcontractor.
It's not like a law that the police can, yeah.
See them issuing the ticket to me, to the subcontractor, that has no tie to the permit.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
So.
So.
I think it has to go to you, but.
Just because, just because they like to debate, okay?
I don't want to debate anyone, yeah.
If, if, if the plumber was, if the plumber was in there and he has his own permit, what then?
But the, but that condition applies to your permit, not, not the plumbing permit.
Okay, okay, well, okay.
But, but, but the plumbing work would fall under the same.
All right, so to sum up, if, if a homeowner does work, I think that they, you know, should report their address to, I don't know, can we get some kind of mechanism, maybe just.
Yeah, no, I, once I figure out the reporting a little bit better here, I can, uh, make sure that I get a list of the occupancies to the police department, so that they know, you know.
Those addresses.
Yeah.
That would be great, yeah, so maybe they don't even have to report, so if, if, if they go and there's something.
I mean, I can give them to you, I'll have them.
I should, I should have them, I'm not sure why it didn't populate correctly, so.
This may, this may make it easier for you, I mean, you guys.
Yeah, I have the list, I have what you said, so.
So if they, so they'll have a list of addresses, so if they go and there's something happening at that particular address, then don't write a ticket.
But I also think it's, it's worth, you know, re-notifying the Danforth, the Butters, and just explaining this to them, that as more residents, you know, move in there, there's gonna be additional work, and that can fall.
And, and they're doing their own construction.
And that can happen outside of these hours.
Sure, I agree.
And when it comes to subcontractors, you're the man, Bob, you write something up with them?
And, and just when you do do work on the, um, garage, or living, or whatever it is, um.
All of it.
Yeah, to notify, to notify, um, both Erica and, and just so that she can notify the police and say.
Yeah, that, that has to get fixed, obviously, and thank you for working, obviously, with us and everything.
No, no, thank, no.
So, we'll, we, we have, we have a good relationship there as we've built.
Look, a lot of suggestions. Yeah, we're not always going to agree, but, you know, okay, I, 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 I do appreciate it.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
So, just a couple of things, so, um, because we received, or, um, there were three tickets issued in August, I stopped signing off on driveway and building permits until Bob had an opportunity to come in and talk to the board about it, so at this point, I should go ahead and continue to sign off on things, the board is gonna decide, and then, um, hopefully, this will get under control.
Well, I'm trying, okay, I mean, okay, I mean, you know, I mean, I, I.
It's the police, they, they saw you call the, the subcontractors and scream at them, but they're like, no, why can't we work then? Cause we told you a million times, you can't work then.
I, I, I bellowed at this kid, okay, and, okay, and.
Bellowed? And one of the sergeants was like there, and he's like, this kid just doesn't get it.
Well, well, yeah, okay, that's, that's what it is, I know these guys by their personality.
I, I understand, everybody's trying to get in and get out as quickly as they possibly can, and hopefully it doesn't hop on, uh, some sort of craftsmanship whatsoever, but then, we have to look out for, you know, the right.
Just one other point that's really important, too, circling back to one of the first topics we talked about, in terms of stabilizing the site, when I say it was stabilized, I meant the detention bases are stabilizing the areas around that, detention bases are stabilized, however, it's still an active construction site, so the lots are still, you know, um, torn or whatnot, but worked on, so there is a possibility for sediment to still migrate, so, I just think, I wanna go on the record here that continued observation of the site needs to happen, just because, um.
Our intention, okay, just, you know, okay, is the next one, you have there, is lot one, so, that's, that's right next to.
Oh, we're, we're the base, yeah.
To base of two, okay, once we stabilize that, and, and, you know, as soon as we get a foundation, and believe it or not, we'll loan that, okay, see if we can't get some grass to grow in the area.
That would be good.
Yeah, and, 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 it, it, it really is our intention to put the, to put the curving in and get the hatch bases working, okay, if.
They'll help so much to get that.
Yeah, you know, okay, you know, it's only helping us.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Give me a second, Jason.
Thank you, guys, all.
All right.
Thank you.
So, next up, we got a century metal, plan board to discuss the affordable housing payment to be submitted to Bolton's Affordable Housing Trust on the fortieth occupancy permit. And also the owners standing for Old Stone Circle's speaker on the forty-first occupancy, the board to weigh in on, weigh in on the sign-off of this permit. All right. Kevin. Mr. Chairman, do you wanna hear?
Uh, we have a request first, or would you like to hear from the developer first?
They will do, Andy, trust, is that right?
I'm not a video file, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hi.
Yeah, we're a little late.
All right, so, we're gonna go through this again? The, uh, how much to pay for the lot, so we determined one forty last time, right?
Um, you had appraisal done, uh, they came in at one forty, um, and appraisal's grossly inaccurate, and, um, so we, I mean, it's just way off, I mean, I tried to sell, I tried to sell the other side of the land over there, uh, and the highest offer I got was eighty-five.
So this, so what lot are you trying, what lot were you?
I was actually trying to sell the entire side, which is more valuable than one lot, because one lot.
Are you talking about which, entire side or what?
The one side.
Okay, phase one?
Yes.
Yeah.
I had it, I had it advertised in the Boston Logan, I had it in M L S, and, um.
How many lots are?
You're selling the entire parcel, though, right?
Yeah.
I, I have advertised it, yes. Have you now split it into individual parcels? No, no, you can't, you can't. Um, so a few months ago, you were in here, and we, we, you disagreed with the number, we told you to get your own appraisal, did you do that? Um, I, uh, contacted an appraiser, and, um, he told me he was a couple of months out at the time, so I had my eye on him. But I guess I should. But just, uh, the, an appraisal, you know, obviously is a, an opinion of value, um, this opinion of value has been proven to be wrong.
So what is, number one, so all the pink ones are the ones that have occupancy rate, aren't they?
And that's forty?
Correct.
And then the white ones are?
Building permits have been issued, but occupancies have not.
Okay.
And then just to sort of be clear on ownership, I went through today to figure out how many of the lots were actually still tied to Andy, um, and it looks like lot forty-nine A potentially is the only one, which is your house.
Yeah.
All the other ones have been sold to other owners. Which brings me to another concern, which we can talk about offline at some point, but lot twenty-five A's been sold, and that was supposed to be a model home, so we can talk about that offline.
Just a lot.
Yeah, it wasn't supposed to be, can be per the, the covenant, so we'll talk about that.
Um, okay. So we're at, so there's forty C Os.
So we're at the point where the second payment, I guess, is due, uh, or, or lot, and, um.
So.
I mean, I don't think it's the.
So, so we have forty C Os in phases two and four, so why are we appraising one in lot one, I mean, cause why does it have to be lot one?
Because it's, I'm developed a lot, like, that's the greatest, so, yeah, so essentially.
And there's nothing that's developed. And there's nothing that's developed.
In phase three, he doesn't own, so it would be phase one.
Okay.
And it's also a lot of my choice.
But what, what happens when we get to, um, number sixty? I mean, everything's gonna be developed at that point. Like, how do we determine the number then?
That's a good question. Um, hopefully at that point we'll be, you know, to a number that everyone's agreeing upon.
What was paid the first payment?
The first payment was around a hundred and thirty-three, a hundred and thirty-four thousand. So what had happened was, in good faith, Andy, you had posted a hundred and forty thousand dollars with the town. And that was based on what National Lumber had purchased the lots in phase three for, is my understanding, when I went back to look at my notes. That was sort of how we came to that number. And Bob Pease had purchased lots in, on Old Stone for like around two hundred thousand. So you were thinking one forty as a safe number to sort of, in good faith, post it to town until we got the appraisal done. So that way the board could continue issuing, um, occupancies. So I think the board had agreed to issue up to twenty-five.
Yep.
And then at that point we hired the appraiser. It came in around, around one thirty-three, one thirty-four, I believe.
Which I was surprised because when I was with the appraiser in the car driving, she, it's a woman, she said seventy-nine. So I was shocked when the second payment.
I don't know. You must not be that interested to get an appraisal because you haven't got one, so.
Well, I actually thought that, you know, I, I am obviously, I'm as interested in you are on seventy thousand dollars or something like that. So this isn't monopoly money. This is real money. And so, yeah, I'm very interested in keeping the.
Part of your covenant, though, so.
What?
It's part of your covenant. You knew it was coming.
No, but I don't think the intent is that I should pay you more than what the lot is worth. This is obviously what I'm not doing.
Understood, but, I mean, we had it appraised and it was one thirty-three. I mean, if you disapprove, get an appraisal.
Uh, I, I actually, uh, you know, appraisers can be right, they can be wrong. And in this case, it's a fact that they're wrong because I've tried to sell it and I can't.
Well, this was like 2016. We've had three years here. Why are we at this point now?
Yeah, I think the bottom line is if you disagree with the number, what you do, we need an appraisal from you to just look at.
You're supposed to get one a couple of months ago. And let, let's say if, if the number came back at seventy-five, can you write a check for that?
Well, if I've already given you almost double, then I would write the debt check for the difference. I mean, I don't think.
Say it again.
I don't think that the.
Is he posted? What?
I think he's referring to the initial payment.
Yeah, the initial payment was wrong.
I mean, the initial payment was wrong.
The first.
Of the twenty.
See, I think what's happening too though, Andy, we need to take into consideration the market. The market at that point might be different to the market today.
Market's gone up.
The first one's done. Are you talking?
It's not done as far as I'm concerned. I'm not, I don't think the town is, are you really looking to charge me seventy-five thousand dollars more than you were supposed to get? I mean, what kind of, what kind of show would that be?
So why don't we look to the, the permit?
We get a hundred and eighty thousand from the other.
Now, that's well and good, but I don't think you should be showing people. I don't think that's the intent of that.
Do we have a list of all the lots that you've sold and what they sold for?
Well, the lots that are undeveloped.
But, yeah.
Lots, lots that are undeveloped vary in value dramatically based on the cost of the road. And on that, that section over there, it's all ledge. The road is not an average cost road, so it impacts the saleability and the value of a unimproved lot. If it was an improved lot, right, improved lots are different because the road's already in. Somebody buying a lot where the road's not in, they gotta build the road. So if, if you have to build a road and it's all ledge, the value of the lot is less.
Erica, so this is not gonna, I mean, he's clearly gonna pick. You're gonna pick the hardest, the hardest ones, yeah.
Yeah, they're all hard over there. You still have to do it.
You could pick one on the road, you could pick lot, uh, seventy-six A or one A.
The same process that we followed for the first, it'll be the same process for all the payments. He can select the, the lot.
What is the.
Yes, I.
That's what it says?
By the way, you know, this was a donation I made. I was not required to do this at the time.
You were required as part of the covenant.
But it was a voluntary donation to the town. There was no, I'm not, I'm not, there was no requirement that I did it. I just did it to be, like, nice.
It's a requirement and it's in our bylaws now.
It was a donation. I know the difference.
At, 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 well, at, at.
So as far as.
At this point.
You know, it's like I wasn't required to give a hundred acres of open space to the town. I was only required to give sixty. I gave an extra forty.
So as far as the special permit.
This is weird.
Okay, well, a hun, yeah, which you didn't need, so.
Let's, let's hear what Erica's saying, just to go back to your, your question just a minute ago. So, yes, the, the permit allows Andy to pick the lot.
Okay.
Three lots within the subdivision, which lot shall be selected by the applicant.
Uh-huh. And I believe when we were talking about getting the appraisals that we agreed that if you disagreed with the appraisal, you could get your own and then.
Well.
And I, and I, we weren't gonna just arbitrarily say we'll take, take yours, but I also think we needed the credentials for the appraisal. Just let me finish.
I'm sorry. God, I'm not trying to trouble.
No, you're talking over me, so just quiet a minute. One of the conditions was that we get to review and approve your appraiser. And I believe, I don't remember whether we said we were gonna split the difference.
I'm not concerned.
Or just, just, there was an agreement in place with you and the board when we discussed the appraisals. And I need to go back. This was three years ago, there was.
This happened.
There, there, you were sitting here, we have it in the minutes, we need to, to go back and review what that is.
In minutes, don't bind anybody on real estate. I never agreed, right, to split any difference, okay? Never.
So, so then it's the board's decision of which appraisal to take?
I, I, I think we should reference back to the permit, right, but we should be following what the conditions says. So, um, the developer may donate the fair market value of the undeveloped lots following the same schedule and load the land. The appraised value will be determined by an independent appraisal done by an appraiser acceptable to both parties based upon the standards set forth in the MIR Act, which is just, um, it's a special permit. So it, they, essentially the board and Andy need to come to an agreement on the appraiser.
Which I thought we had in the first appraiser. Andy just doesn't like the number that, that she came back with.
You know what you're gonna get for five hundred dollars, which is what you paid for an appraiser? Fuck this.
So why'd you?
I didn't agree to it. You guys hired the person. I didn't agree.
I think, I think, I think, well, I, I think you said something like, well, I agree unless, you know, you wanted to see the number or something like that. I forget. If it came in low, I'm sure you would have agreed. That, that would have been a perfect appraiser.
People act in their own self-interest, but I mean, in this particular instance, it's been proven to be dramatically wrong.
Well, then get an appraiser.
I will, I'm, I will. But I mean, I didn't, if I had gotten an appraiser back then and came in with a lower appraisal, you would have had an argument. At this point is how I do it because I, I can't sell it for, for anything closer.
Yeah, but, but so now we're in a position where, now, now we're in a position where nineteen, twenty-six, thirty-nine, forty, and fifty-two aren't owned by you, so you don't care about COs.
I care about everything over there.
Well, I mean, but you're not financially impacted by it. They're already.
I'm financially impacted, sure.
Oh, you're financially impacted?
Financially impacted by everything over there.
But if these people can't get a CO, I mean, it's not, is it a priority to you?
Yeah, it's a priority. My, my, my son has a lot over there, but the house is done.
I just, you know.
So I guess.
I don't want this to linger is all I'm saying.
No, I'm happy to go get an appraiser and I just think that we should approach it from the point of view of, what's the, what's the value?
So let's see, I mean, I guess.
What is the real value? Not, not just because an appraiser makes a mistake and says something's worth a hundred and forty thousand dollars.
So what are you, so you're saying seventy thousand is the right number?
No, I'm saying that the highest offer I had was eighty-five thousand.
For what? Eighty-five thousand dollars for what? For an unfinished lot?
For, I mean, for lots, for the entire section of lots in that phase one where that one lot is. And in this particular.
Show me, show me on this map what you're talking about.
The lot that was appraised was what lot number?
Just, I forget.
It's, it was over here. It was one of these lots.
That's what I was saying the first time. I thought it was an unfinished lot, I mean, one of these phases, no?
Yeah, it was.
No, it's always, there's always a phase one.
It was over here. This phase is all rock.
Yeah, no, I know.
Okay, I've, I've.
So what, what, somebody offered you eighty-five thousand dollars for what?
For the lots that I owned in this phase.
For this one lot?
No, for the entire phase.
The entire phase?
Eighty-five thousand for.
Per lot.
Oh, per lot.
Per lot.
How many lots in there?
There's, I own fourteen. Now, now something, keep in mind, as a group, they are worth more per lot than one individually. Because person buying one lot individually has no control over when that road is gonna be put in.
Uh-huh.
So there would be a large discount involved, right, for somebody who went out and bought a landlocked piece of land.
Oh, Andy, save the fifty.
You think I'm making it up? I'm only being realistic.
I understand what you're saying, but you're just making it difficult.
I'm not making it difficult. I'm, I'm, I wanna, I'm wanna, I'm happy to pay you the legitimate value. I'm not gonna pay them.
Which is why you have not gone to get an appraisal.
I will.
But what's, what's the legitimate value?
The, the highest offer I had was eighty-five thousand dollars.
Oh, let's just do it, let's.
When, when can we press the budget?
It's not, and I, and I advertised it in the newspaper, in MLS, based on our experience for months, and I couldn't, nobody was interested.
This is a good point, Randy. Kevin, so he's looking for the forty-first occupancy.
Yeah.
And we're held up. You can come up with a.
Nice, thank you.
All right, if you just wanna state for the camera, yes.
Yeah, for the record, attorney Kevin Erickson, on behalf of Randy Kelly McLaughlin, who are the owners of lot twenty-five A. Uh, I'm sorry, not lot twenty-five A, lot thirty-nine B, which is seventy-four Old Stone Road.
I see thirty-nine A and seventy-four B.
Um, it's just thirty-nine.
It's forty-nine.
It's just thirty-nine.
Okay, thirty-nine, is it this one?
Yeah, I think it's just thirty-nine.
You know, it's thirty-nine A, thirty-nine B.
That's the last, the lot lines on that phasing diagram, huh?
No, I think that. Oh, okay, okay. That's, that's fine. So, so just work with that.
So I'll give you a little bit of background here on the McLaughlin situation. The McLaughlins purchased their lot on August eighth of two thousand seventeen, so, uh, more than two years ago now. At that time, just for reference, there were twenty-eight occupancy certificates, I think, issued in the subdivision. So there were twelve plus or minus remaining before this condition twenty would have become an issue again. So from our perspective, um, it, it's not reasonable that the McLaughlins could have anticipated that this was gonna ultimately be an issue for their pursuit of an occupancy. Uh, they did originally hire, um, Old Stone Estates as the contractor. Those, um, that relationship eroded and did result in some civil litigation, which is pending now. I, we're not gonna get into that tonight, obviously. I just bring it up as, by way of reference and background. I, honestly, the particulars I don't even wanna get into, and I'm not even privy to. I only represent the McLaughlins for purposes of this very limited request. So fast forward two years. Anyone who's ever tried to build a house from the ground up, it's challenging. It's an arduous process, and this was a particularly, uh, difficult one. And the end was in sight. They were living with Kelly's in-laws, Randy's parents, uh, for quite some time with their two young boys. Uh, you know, again, constructing their dream home in Century Hill, very nice development, one, one that they wanna move into and they were looking forward to. Uh, they were in line to get their temporary occupancy the Friday before Labor Day. And, um, sort of at the eleventh hour, we're told that there was an issue with planning, but obviously the town hall was closed on Friday, the planning department was closed. So they were told to call on Tuesday. So I ran into the McLaughlins over the weekend and we, we spoke about it. I said I'd reach out to Erica. And Erica forwarded me the, um, the two thousand and seven amended subdivision decision. So I had a chance to look at, at condition twenty. I do think, um, there's a, a strong legal argument for the McLaughlins that it doesn't apply, but I don't even really wanna go there because, you know, we're not gonna let it get here tonight by any means. And I don't think that's the board's desire. I'd rather just focus sort of on the public policy piece, which is if you read condition twenty, it's very clear that that's a condition that's intended to be for the developer. Uh, the original applicant or whoever took over the subdivision, if he sold the subdivision, et cetera, not to be delegated really to a third party lot owner who purchased in good faith, you know, two years prior. No one here thinks that the McLaughlins should have to come up with the fair market value for the lot or find a lot to donate. So, you know, the only other reason to sort of suggest that holding up their occupancy would be worthwhile is if we were going to incentivize compliance. In this case, they closed on their lot two years ago. They paid their full value for it two years ago. They now have a construction loan that's in their own name, and until they provide occupancy on, they can't even get their last renovation issued. Which means there are subcontractors who are not able to get paid, and you can imagine how quickly this can spiral out of control. So we're here pleading for a waiver of this condition twenty, just as it pertains to the McLaughlin's lot. I understand, board doesn't like to be in this position. The McLaughlins certainly don't either, and, and they just wanna be able to, you know, go tomorrow to the building inspector and say, hey, condition twenty's not a problem for me anymore, we all said.
Uh, okay, so Andy, I just wanna ask you, so if you think it's eighty thousand, could we, could you pay the eighty thousand? And we can allow this forty-first CO to through?
I would pay you eighty thousand dollars per lot times two. I was, I, the appraisal was wrong on the first lot. I don't know what's so funny. It's not funny to me that I gave you an extra money.
Why is it just coming up three years later, Andy? Why weren't you fighting for your money three years ago?
I was fighting for it three years ago, but you guys have all the power, okay? I'm in the middle of a development.
You never came up with any of your appraisal.
I, 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 I come in here and I talk about things that are important all the time, right? And you, you, you decide which ones you wanna handle and which ones you don't.
Can I ask a question? So.
So I really, I, I don't like coming in here and being belittled, and I don't like coming in here and having sarcasm. I come in here in good faith, I build a nice development over there, and it's, and, and it's a lot of money to me, okay?
Yeah, can I, can I ask a question?
It's a lot of money to me. I shouldn't have to pay, nor should the town want, right, me to pay more than what the original deal was.
Okay, so.
There's been a mistake here, and that appraisal's wrong.
Wait, can I take a, can I just say, I just wanna take a step back here. In the permit, there's, um, for this whole thing, there's supposed to be three, eventually three payments, correct, on three, three lots? Is it, was it always stipulated that the payment would be the same for all three?
No.
And it's not clear.
No.
Okay, so then was it supposed to be the first payment would be per the appraisal of the lot at that specific date? And then the second one would be an appraisal for that lot at that date, and then fair market value of the lot? That's what I mean. So is it fair market value at that date?
Donate the fair market value of the undeveloped lots.
Cause where, um, filling.
Based on an appraisal.
That would have been done at that time. Cause obviously as years go by, appraisals go up, they go down, you know, they change, market changes. So my whole point was, it sounds like the first payment of a hundred and forty was based on information at that time where you said the lots were between one forty, two hundred. You were willing to give one forty, so that would be appropriate.
No, 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 no. Whatever you just said is an anchor.
Oh, okay.
If I want me to correct you, I will.
Sure. I thought that's what Erica, you had.
Well, I mean, we're gonna split hairs here. It says donate the fair market value. It doesn't say values of the undeveloped lots. And then it says, um, the appraised value will be determined by an independent appraisal. It doesn't say the appraised values will be determined. So it sounds like one appraised value for the three lots.
And then that would be the same for all three.
I mean, you can read it for yourself. It's actually in your packet and see what you think, um.
Cause I'm just trying to figure out, cause I get Andy, your point of you're trying to say if it's one, you know, let's just call it seventy. If it's supposed to be seventy, is it seventy-three times? Or is it, you know, was it supposed to be one forty back in two thousand sixteen and now it's seventy? And then, and it should be a different number?
So it's this value of the. I mean, let's step back even slightly further. It's three, three non-continuous slots.
Correct.
Or he can pay a fee in low.
Right.
Which would, which would imply that each lot has to be appraised because every lot is gonna have a different value.
Right, I'd agree with that.
Or you can just cut to the chase and just donate the lot and have it done with. And then you get your hundred and forty back. It frees, frees up this issue and we're all done.
The problem of, the problem of donating the lot is that when the road gets built.
Yeah.
Whoever builds and pays for the road, they're gonna improve your lots, right? So now you have a lot that's worth two hundred thousand dollars. So it doesn't make sense to donate the lot because you gotta build the road and it goes right by all the lots.
So, okay, so based on what you just read.
Yeah.
We would need an appraisal for three separate lots.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the appraisal.
When you read six I's, so the applicant shall donate three lots within the subdivision, which lots shall be selected by the applicant or in amount equal to the appraised value of the selected lots. So without. So, without worry.
I mean, just to throw something in the wind here, um, I mean, would, as, as one option, um, I'm just thinking, trying to think outside the box here, you know, if, you know, if we were at one forty and you're at seventy, kinda come in the middle, call it a hundred, you've already given a hundred and forty, if you were to give sixty, we're at two hundred in the meantime.
Hey, I'm not interested in giving away thirty thousand dollars.
I, I, I hear you, but can you, wait, let me finish, let me just finish. Um, you know, assuming so, we're going lower than what we think, we're going higher than what you think. Um, until you could get your appraisal done so that we have something to look at, we would have at least something put in for two houses. Easily can release this, and in the meantime, you would have a number that maybe is smaller or larger for the third payment.
Andy, what three lots?
And it's, it's not saying it would definitely, you would definitely lose the thirty, I'm just saying it would give us a little bit more comfort knowing, um, we have more than the one forty to be able to release this lot, in the meantime, you can get your appraisal that if it comes in and it says it's eighty and you've given us a total of two hundred, I, I mean, you, you'd only need to give us ten thousand more for the third lot.
The.
What?
Oh, sorry, no.
What, 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 what three lots, what three lots, what three lots in phase one do you want?
Twenty-four. Forty thousand.
I don't know, I don't, I don't actually agree with the way you're reading it.
Oh, well, what's, what's, what, what, what lot did we appraise at first? Which lot?
I don't remember.
I don't, let me do, I don't think I have enough to tell them.
Okay. Hold on, hold on, so whatever that lot is, we, you've never got an appraisal on that. Get an appraisal on that lot that we donated, get an appraisal on lot, pardon, donation?
The second, yeah, I know that, yeah.
The second one.
Yeah.
So then they'll each have their own appraisal.
Correct.
You're assuming it's eighty-five?
No, I'm saying.
You think so, or two seventy and eighty-five is what you're thinking?
I, I wanna make sure you understand, I have an offer to buy the entire section, not a really, a real lot.
Oh, eighty-five each?
Where they were eighty-five each, yeah.
But that was, the guy was in control.
Yeah.
And he could put the road in.
Yeah.
This is, that's not the situation here with the lot that I'm giving to the town. This is, how much would someone pay to buy one lot?
Yeah.
In the middle of a phase in a development where they have no control over getting the road built?
I know, we need, we need an appraisal, so.
So, so, the, the, it's less, do you understand?
But until you give us that appraisal to review that.
I'm happy to go get it, I'm just, and, and I, I honestly, I put the lots on the market on the, on the, based on the value that you, your appraiser came in at, uh, because I, if I came in with just an appraiser, um, you would think that possibly, well, gee, he went out and got an appraiser to, uh, uh, I mean, there's an old joke, you know, and appraisers have a designation after their, after their name called MAI, that's Massachusetts appraisal institute. In the real estate community, there's a joke, it's called made as instructed. Okay, and, so I didn't wanna have that argument that, you know, uh, I went out and got an appraiser who came in much lower. Okay, I put him on the market for your value, I get some.
It's more complicated than that, though, someone who buys that lot is buying into this whole subdivision, this whole mess.
Then how can they build the road?
They may not want that.
They might want?
They may not want that, so that's, might be why you're having a hard time selling it.
What are you talking about?
If someone buys that, they are now signing into this, this covenant, right?
If someone buys what?
That phase one.
The entire phase?
That's what you're selling, right?
Yes.
Okay, you're saying you can't sell it?
No, I'm saying I put it on the market for, for a hundred and thirty, I think, and, no, I can't sell it for a hundred and thirty. That's what I said, and what I said is, the whole per lot is worth more than one lot alone. Because if you think about it, um, it's common sense.
Okay, you need to go get an appraisal.
I will.
Thank you. Because, I mean, we still, we still, we still need to resolve the, the, the number twenty, and we need to resolve the number forty. Think personally, in the meantime, I think, you know, I, I don't see a, a reason to hold up the occupancy on.
Let's waive the forty-first.
I mean, we'll get this, we will get the court out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I, I think the individual, the people that have bought individual lots in a building, they shouldn't be held up.
Yes, they should be.
For sure.
The developer, on the other hand, I think, you know, we, we, we got the appraisal three years ago, and you haven't, you haven't addressed it, you haven't dealt it, done anything with it.
Right.
Until now that we're at, at number forty, now, you know, you know, so, I think, you know, I, I, I think at this point, the developer gets held up.
I, I, but Andy and I talked about this, so, I would just ask the board to provide a little more guidance for me, just because forty-second could come tomorrow, and then we're in the same boat, I'm back here requesting the board, you know, to, to weigh in on that, so. Can we tie the, this next payment to Andy's CO for his house that, um, I think it's lot, uh, whatever lot it is, on Mel Pond Road that he owns?
Yeah.
Um, and, and honestly, partial road acceptance as well, this has.
Forty-nine A.
I mean, all, all of this has to get resolved as part of the road.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay. I mean, but, but I think, I think to Erica, to, to your, I think, my, my take would be, people that have, that individually bought a lot and, and had it built, I think, I don't think we should be holding them.
Yeah, I, I agree, that's, I mean.
But I, I, I guess maybe with the caveat that if Andy built it, then, then they're still fair game. But if somebody, you know, if they has an independent builder, then, then.
So then what if Andy sells off lot forty-nine, and then we're in the same boat? What if he sells off phase one, I mean, what, I don't.
I, I, I mean fundamentally, I, I, I do agree with, with, um, Mr. Erickson, that there is a, a little bit of a, there's a hole here where, you know, Key's Farm could have gotten approval, sold off individual, all the individual lots. And then, and then we have no leverage, so.
I mean, we did, we did change that to, a percentage for per building permit, right?
Changed it to building.
Yeah, we, we, we did, at the.
We addressed that.
At the.
Right, but it still doesn't, but it still doesn't, it still doesn't, it still doesn't protect somebody from the.
Yeah, this is a mess.
On this, on this particular.
I thought we changed, we changed the payment schedule.
Well, somebody who.
Sells it all off.
Who, who sells it off, who gets the, the permit and then sells it all.
Yeah, agreed, but I think.
Yeah, so, so I think there's a hole there that we still need to, 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 to look at.
Keep in mind, the town, the town could have almost the right amount of money for two lots.
I, 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 Eric, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not talking about CME at all at the moment, this is, this is a general, some, a more general, uh, issue where a developer could get the subdivision approved, sell off the lots as is, and we, we have no leverage to, to exercise the affordable.
No, no, no.
Now, I, I'm not talking about CME.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I've said that three times though, so. So, I think, you know, as a separate issue, we need to look at, at that and, and think about that for, for town meeting. I think here, the lots that were sold off and, and built by somebody other than the developer, you know, we, we shouldn't hold those up.
No, so, we want to allow.
But in the meantime, we need to get, we need to get the affordables resolved. So to give Erica direction, we're saying that we'll just hold up the CO on forty-nine?
Well, so, hold on, first, we wanna make sure it's clear that this one can go forward, right? So the occupancy can be, um, the CO can be allowed for the forty-first, is that what it is, just the forty-first lot?
For seventy-four olds. Do we want to just do forty-first, or do we wanna?
I would say lot thirty-nine. Uh, make it specific to seventy-four.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, like, like it's at seventy-four olds, so.
Exactly, let's, let's allow the occupancy to go forward for, or, I'm wanting to make a, I'll make a motion to allow the occupancy to go forward for seventy-four Old Stone Circle with, this is where I have the conditions, right? With the condition that the.
Well, I don't, I don't think you need any conditions.
I don't.
I, I just allow.
This one, just, this one just goes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just.
Do that, it's, okay.
I'll second that. I want to pull one favor.
Alright.
Hi.
Alright. I'm gonna say thank you.
And then.
Stop the yes, stop the yeah, exactly.
Good night.
Uh-huh.
Good night.
Good night.
Good luck.
And now.
And, uh, yeah, so, I mean, just appraise the lot, appraise Andy.
I, I know.
Did you come in with two appraisals at seventy thousand? We, cause clearly it says we're supposed to.
I just knew if I.
It doesn't talk about two.
I hadn't put the things on the market and actually tried and prove that the things, the first appraisal that's been done is wrong. We would be sat, talking about, well.
No, but I think we also, one of the things we had talked about was, I think, was reviewing the credentials of the appraiser. So if you give us the credentials of whoever you wanna use, and we review them, and they give you, and we say, okay, this, this person's fine to use, and you give us the appraisal from them, we've already signed off and said they're appropriate to use, we don't really have much argument there.
But, but so Andy's also saying that he wants to use, if the number for the first lot was less than the one thirty-three, he wants to use that money towards the second one.
No, yeah, I know, it's, yeah.
So, yeah, as long as it's not like your cousin or somebody, you know?
No, I'm probably gonna use Coleman, but I think.
That, who you previously requested, or is that the, the appraiser that you previously, so the board did review the credentials of that?
That's what I remembered, yeah.
Well, yeah, I can bring it back, I'll look at that paperwork.
But is that the one that's months out?
He was a couple months out, what I call him.
Are, are any of these other lots on the verge of CO?
I don't know.
Uh, we, other lots isn't.
They were two, two.
In phase two and four.
Twenty-six, probably.
So I guess, can you get an appraisal from someone else sooner? I mean, a couple months out, now we're, we're in September, we're running.
I think it, the important thing here is to get a good appraisal.
That, that's fine, but you said you called a while ago, so is the couple months out?
We're, we're willing to work with you, Andy, just, come on.
I'm not looking to not pay the money, I just wanna pay what I'm, you know, what's correct.
Can, can you?
I don't wanna pay, you know, you a hundred and thirty, and then I go sell them for seventy, that would kinda be a.
No, can you contact Coleman and see, I mean, you said you called them a while ago, so maybe they're.
Yeah, so, I'll call him tomorrow.
I also don't, I mean, I don't think you needed the comment where you were saying we're beli, belittling, belittling you, because I think we work with you pretty well. You go to admit you're not the easiest person to work with, Andy.
That's belittling me right there, so.
It is, I guess, I'm sorry.
It is, it is.
I'm sorry, but it's you.
We, we have tried to work with you this whole time.
We, we work with you.
My question is, who's built the nicest development in town? And that's what the planning board should be con, concerned about.
It was a very nice development.
Who did a nice job? Who did a nice job? That's what the planning board's supposed to be, be looking for is, is somebody who executes and does a good job.
Well, I mean, I'll, you have the.
But I come in here and, you know, I mean, I would kill myself over that. I've lost millions and millions of dollars, no, I'm not in the mood to pay extra money, I'm sorry.
We're not asking you, we're just saying, just try to get the, just try to get the appraisal, please.
Try to come up with a process that works.
And I will, and I, you know what, I want to, can I mention one thing that's been outstanding for years and years and years and years and years, well, much longer than this? The town taking the deed to the open space, right? I delivered the deed in blank, signed, mm, six years ago, seven years ago, and I'm still getting taxed on the way.
What's the process for that, Erica?
The development conservation trust, kind of like that are gonna be forming the property, we own a conservation restriction. So, um, I have sent just recently, in the last couple of months, when we started talking about partial road acceptance, the most updated, I had our current town council review the deed. And now I've sent it off to the trust, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, once I have any input from them, I'll send it to you.
Alright, wasn't there any issues with like easements for the, lots and stuff?
Yeah, right, where the, um, where the.
Maintenance and stuff.
The well, the well is, all the water supplies.
There's, there should not be any issue with it at all. The wells are located where they're located based on the approvals.
Well.
And the town signed off.
But we need, we need to give you access to it, so there needs to be an easement, right?
There is an easement, and there's a conservation restriction on the entire open space, right? Which the planning board signed, the board of selectmen signed, the ConCon signed, the state legislatures signed, natural heritage signed, everybody signed. So I don't know what the problem is, but we've been taking.
Well, I agree, I agree with you on that.
Ten years, and you should get, you know, and meanwhile, they get charged taxes, which is not fair, anyway.
I agree.
Sorry.
Alright, we'll be looking for an appraisal.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you. And then, so, with forty-second, I will come back then.
I think that's, yeah, we just, we just, we just.
Yeah. So I guess, like, we need to give direction to Erica for, I guess we'll know, the forty-second, you have to come back tomorrow. Up to us, unless we, I mean, you were trying to say if they, if any of these who previously bought the lots, um, to allow, is that what you were trying to say, to just allow that?
Yeah.
Well, but I think that was only if he was making some movement towards.
Yeah, so maybe.
Well, no, no, I mean, I always carry the same logic as, as they refer, setting for Old Stone, which is, you know, if somebody bought a house and has somebody else, or bought a, a lot and, and somebody else built it, then they shouldn't be penalized because Andy can't, hasn't.
Has somebody else built it.
Well, that's what I suggested, do you, do you wanna, I mean, we can make a motion to just put on forty-nine and just allow nineteen, twenty-six, forty, and fifty-two to get COs?
Well. But they, 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 they bought the lots, but I don't know who's, who the builder is on them.
Um, that, sounds like not a, it says it's owned by others.
Yeah, owned by others, but not built by others.
Or it's, well, I don't know that it matters who's building it, right?
Well, me, well, I mean, if, if, I mean, if Andy's doing building, he knows what the, again, it's a, it would be a loophole of, yeah, I'll sell off the lots and build everything.
Yeah.
So, I'll sell the lots with a restriction that I have to be the builder.
Let's just take the waivers of all by lot then.
That, I'm, that's fine, I'm okay with that.
We'll just leave it, so you do have to, yeah, forty-second, we gotta.
So they'll have to, if they wanna come in and, and pay some P, they'll have to ask for the waiver.
I mean, if, if he sold off one, I, what would, honestly, what would happen in that case? Like, is he, is Andy gonna still keep coming to meetings? No?
I don't know. Well, that, that, that's why I think that there's, even, even in what we have, now there's still a hole there that.
Yeah.
It, it's almost, you know, when we do a subdivision approval, we need either lean on the affordable lot or lots, so they couldn't be sold out for much.
It's good, it's good that we switched to building permits.
Okay, so, yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, building permits helps, but, but it's still.
It's still the same problem.
I mean, I mean, I mean, if he's, you know, I mean, if he wasn't sold off all the lots.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we have, we have no, we have no recourse.
I mean, what, what is the plan? Like, he's had phase one on the market for a long time, like, what, what happens? Does the new, does the buyer of that come in and?
There's still, they would still be, um, subject, right, subject to the same approvals, so.
But it's. Even though it's, it's Andy.
It's just a different owner, but it's the same approvals.
To me, by that logic, why aren't we going after the phase three owners for?
Yeah, right.
For some of these, uh.
Affordable.
Affordable units, right, like they.
It would be like going after the McLaughlins, probably, yeah, essentially, right?
Sort of, yeah.
I mean, technically, they're not the applicant, they're part owner, but they're, I mean, Andy is essentially the applicant, the developer of the road, and the approvals for the road.
So it's whoever takes over the road then?
Well, I, I'm just trying to, I'm starting thinking out loud.